Mr. England.
Present.
Mr. Kessler.
Present.
Ms. Mills.
Present.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Present.
Mr. Turpin.
Present.
Item two, Special Recognition and Pledge of Allegiance from Barnes Elementary. Ms. Ray Lee, Judy Dossett, Lily Hilldear, Emily Rhodes, and Paxton McFarland. Hope I didn't kill anybody's names.
Oh, man. It feels like the Super Bowl. My name is Riley Zerigoza. I'm the principal at Barnes Elementary, and I brought four incredible leadership kids with me, and they're going to lead out the rest of this time.
My name is Jude Dossett, and I am in the second grade at Barnes Elementary. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please remain standing.
Pausing for a stepstool.
My name is Lily Hilldear, and I am in the third grade at Barnes Elementary. Please stand and join me in the Oklahoma pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Do-over. Here we go. Ready?
I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. It symbols a peace, unites all people. You, thank you. You may be seated.
My name is Emily Robles, and I am in the fourth grade at Barnes Elementary. We wanted to share what is important to us that we are learning and practicing at school every day. The Eight Habits of Leadership by Stephen Covey help us learn how to be productive members of our community. The habits speak to emotions, strengths, friendships, meaning, and accomplishment. Please allow us to share what these eight habits mean to us.
Good evening. My name is Paxton McFarland, and I'm a fifth grade leader at Barnes. The first habit is be proactive. I am a responsible person. I take initiative. I choose my actions, attitudes, and moods. I do not blame others for my wrong actions, and I do the right thing without being asked, even when no one is looking. Our second habit is begin with the ending mind. This means I plan ahead and set goals. I do things that have meaning and make a difference. I am an important part of my classroom, and I contribute to my school's mission and vision. I also look for ways to be a good citizen.
The next habit is number three, put first things first. I spend my time on things that are most important. This means that I say no to things I know I should not do. I set priorities, make a schedule, and follow my plan. I am disciplined and organized. Habit number four is think win-win. We learn to balance courage for getting what we want with consideration for what others
We work together for good. This also means that when a conflict arises, I look for a win-win solution so that we both can get what we need. I wanted to share about habit five called seek first to understand then to be understood. This means I listen to other people's feelings. I try to see things from their viewpoint. I listen to others without interrupting, and I also practice listening with my ears, my eyes, and my heart. I am also confident in voicing my ideas.
Habit number six is synergize. At Barnes, we value other people's strengths and learn from them. We get along well with, we get along well with others, even people who may be different. We work well in groups and seek out other people's ideas because we know that by teaming with others, we can create better solutions than what any one of us could do alone. Our last two habits are really important to us. Habit number seven is sharpen the saw. This focuses on eating, eating right, exercising, and getting enough sleep. This takes care of my body.
It also means that I learn in lots of ways and places, not just at school. This takes care of my mind. I spend time with family and friends and take time to find meaningful ways to help people. This takes care of my heart and soul. Sharpening the saw means that I balance all four parts of myself. Finally, the eighth habit is to find your voice and inspire others to find theirs. This helps me to know my own unique personal significance. Those who inspire others to find theirs are the leaders needed now and for the future. Thank you for being here tonight, and may you find the parts of you too that inspires leadership in others.
So those are the eight leaderships, the leadership habits of, by Stephen Covey that we practice at Barnes Elementary every day. Can I have the families of our four incredible students stand up so we can recognize you? And we have some Barnes teachers and staff as well, so if you'll stand up, we can recognize you. They are the magic workers, so. Teachers, stand up, yes. And staff.
Thank you so much, students. And Ms. Zerigoza, would you guys please come to the front for a picture with the board?
The paper's right here, and I'll get it in a minute, okay? Chairs, you're welcome to come up and take pictures as well. In front of the giant. Anybody else gonna need the stool?
This is to item number three. Reports to the board. Superintendent Dr. Margaret Coats.
Those of you that looks like you know the drill, you are welcome to stay, but you are also welcome to leave right now if you don't want to stay for the whole meeting. Now would be a good time to exit. Ms. Zerigoza said, does anybody else need the stepstool? And I was like, wait, maybe I do. I don't know. I'd like to bring to you tonight just a couple of things, a legislative update, and I'm gonna, now that we're in the legislative session, I'll start trying to bring attention to some bills that we are tracking, and it's a long, it's a long few months to go here, and so we're early in the session. It just started last week. But first thing is Senator, U.S. Senator Mark Wayne Mullen is planning a visit. He was going to come last fall, and plans fell through, so he's expected to be here February 20th. And we will, once we get every, all the details finalized, we'll send those out to you, and you guys are welcome to come. Right now, we're planning on going to the high school and visiting two U.S. history classes and allowing our students to ask him questions, and he can talk to them in the afternoon. So as far as the legislative session, there are two, or actually, the Senate education bills, many of Senator Pew's bills that he's put forward are really pretty positive. There's just a few that I'd like to bring your attention to that we're watching, that we, that we find somewhat problematic. One of those is Senate Bill 1768 by Kristin Thompson, and this takes away flexibility with virtual days. We use virtual days and distance learning days for inclement weather. This bill would allow us to continue that practice, however, limits, sets timeframes around synchronous versus asynchronous instruction, really kind of tightens things down and takes away flexibility, and more importantly, it removes that local control for school, school districts. And so we want to always maintain that local control when we have an elected school board such as yourself. The other bill that we find problematic is House Bill 3563. This is a bill proposed by Chris Banning out of Bixby, and this one proposes to move school board elections to the general election. And so you can see how that would be problematic, especially in an election year such as this, when there's a presidential election, just too much going on at the same time. And we want to make sure that we have informed voters when they go to the polls to vote. That's more important to us than having a certain, you know, a number, a certain number of people voting. We want to make sure that when people go, they know what they're voting for and who they're voting for. Three bills that we are really excited about, Senate Bill 1395. This adds four members to the State Board of Education with two members appointed by the Senate Pro Tem and two members by the House Speaker. It also allows members to be removed by the Appointing Authority for cause. Right now, all state school board members are appointed by the governor, so that would balance out those, it would just balance out the checks and balances with regard to those appointments. And then another one that we are in favor of is Senate Bill 1522. This is Dwayne Pemberton, and this one doesn't seem like a big deal, but it is. Last year, we got historic funding, and one of the funding streams was Red Bud School Grants. The Red Bud School Grants, we put the, that grant money into our building fund. The Red Bud Grant has limitations on it right now. We can't spend it in the same way that we can spend funds in the building fund, so we want to remove some of those restrictions so that if it's going to be put in the building fund, that we can still use those funds in the same way that we use the building fund for things like insurance premiums for our school facilities. Right now, we cannot use, as it's worded, the Red Bud Funding for Insurance Premiums. And then the third one that we are excited about is Senate Bill 1313. This is Adam Pew, and provides another teacher pay increase. So we want to continue to make those investments in our teacher salaries as we are still behind with the regional average in our salary. So Senate Bill 1313, Senate Bill 1522, and Senate Bill 1395. We're all in favor of those bills. Next on my list is long-range facilities planning. We had our planning committee, our third meeting last Thursday. It was very productive. We were able to gather some feedback regarding preferences with grade configuration for full-day pre-K for high school and our grade centers. These preferences will help guide us as we create our master plan and continue to look towards the future when we build our facilities. We will be presenting the first draft of the master plan for long-range facilities at our next committee meeting, which is February 22nd. And then we will bring the final plan to the board for approval either in April or May. And then finally, some good news with athletics, our swim regionals. We had thirteen out of fourteen qualified for the state meet. That state meet will be February 16th and 17th at Jinx, so that's outstanding, so congratulations to the swimmers. Cheer and Palm are currently in Orlando competing at Nationals, and we've had thirty-two student athletes have signed national letters of intent, so congratulations to all those athletes. I don't know, Ms. Lang, is that a record for OASO as far as signing?
Forty's.
Forty's, okay. Well, we still have time. Yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you so much. Any, any questions or anything? Yes, sir.
On the increase, is it an increase in the State Board of Education? Is it going to stay at five or go to nine?
The way that it's written right now, there's, it would be, it would go to nine. It would add four. It would keep what's there and then add four. So I, that's probably a way to maybe soften the idea of what's being proposed, but I would, I would propose, I would like to see just maybe six board members, two from each branch. So two from the executive, two from the governor, two from the House, and two from the Senate. So I'll be talking to Senator Pew about that and see if he would be willing to make any changes to his bill.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Gets us to item B, Teaching and Learning. Mr. Officer.
Good evening. It's good to see you guys on the, for the teaching and learning portion this evening, the update. We have some, a couple exciting pieces of news to celebrate. First of all, OHS had the, is the highest sending school to TCC for dual credit in the area. And just to give you some perspective there, in 1718, we had a thousand credits earned through dual credit. Last year, we had thirty-five hundred credits earned through dual credit. And again, our kids also earn credit through AP coursework. In 1718, twenty-five hundred credits total earned, and in, in last year, almost forty-four hundred credits earned. If you did the math on that based upon what it costs to attend OSU, that forty-five hundred would, would be close to a million and a half dollars in savings for our families. And that's really a credit to Billy and his team who transport those kids for free if they need it. We also have been providing books for free for those students, and so really, the cost for those guys is the cost of an AP test or ninety-three dollars per college course taken. So it's just an unbelievable deal. I'm really excited for them and what the team there is doing in that area. Also, exciting news regarding CSI and ICAP, our internships at the high school have almost doubled this year. The number of students involved in internships has gone from a hundred and twenty-five to two-hundred and thirty-ish. So again, huge credit to the College and Career Department and Mr. Cooper, Mr. Cooper. Oh, sure. Mrs. Cooper, though, really, to, to Mrs. Cooper and her team for what they're doing there. So it's pretty exciting. I also want to give you a math adoption update. Progressing really well. I'm really proud of that team and how they're working hard at that. We had another meeting this evening, and related to long-range planning that occurred last week, and where we think perhaps our grade centers and such are going, we talked a lot about the possibility of fifth grade being pulled out and what that might mean for math adoption. You know, the, the first option from that team Thursday night was to possibly place fifth graders near sixth graders, which could potentially carry some really good academic benefits. And so we talked tonight about how it might be a good thing if fifth and sixth graders had the same adoption in math, and it looks like we're headed in that direction. So that's exciting. We anticipate, again, being able to bring to you lots of requests to spend a lot of money in March for math books. So our goal is to be able to have teachers have those in their hands when they go home over the summer. My last item, I'm going to save for the end because we're going to introduce some folks here in a minute, but in the Special Services Department, Mrs. Duncan had her first advisory committee meeting on the thirtieth, went great. I was in that room. She did a great job of just providing lots of information to reflect on and talk about. The next meeting is actually coming up later this week, where they'll continue to have some of those conversations. And in fine arts, the OK, OK MEA Honor Concert with sixth grade was just amazing. It was so cool to see a hundred and seventy-five-ish sixth graders on the stage performing at that concert. I know that Mr. Barber was super proud of them. Also, you might have noticed the new art installation here in the building and how cool that looks. And then finally, March 7th through 9th, put it on your calendar, the high school is going to present the Little Shop of Horrors there at the high school in the PAC. So my last item is to introduce our esports team. So if I could have Mr. James Paschal, please come up to the front. Mr. Paschal is computer teacher at the high school and also our esports coach, and he came to us just two years ago and has really taken a program that was in its infancy stage, and this year, they're state champs, which is pretty exciting. So Mrs. Mrs. Cooper sent me a, a list of the names, and also I'll tell you a little bit about those kids. If I could have the, the students, if you're in the room, come up to the front, please. Team captain Caleb Rathbone, co-captain Strong Baker, Chi Nu Vang, Jacob Yang, Ty Anderson, and Jaden, and Jaden Nguyen.
And Jude Worky.
And Dan Jude Worky.
And Jude Worky.
Dan Jude Worky. Gotcha, all right. And this is the second year we were a part of the Oklahoma Esports League. Last year, we finished fifth place. This year, we started the season in the fall. In the regular season, we were six and one. The playoffs were set up with a double elimination bracket, with all of us having a first round bye. We beat class in high school in the second round. Union, yes, in the third round. I mean, sorry. And then the final two games happened on December 8th at the UMAC in-person. In the semifinal game, we beat Jinx thirteen to ten. Union earned their way out of the loser bracket to play us in the finals, where we beat them in a best-of-three series. First game, we beat Union thirteen to ten, then beat them in the second game thirteen to six. As a side, the junior varsity for Valorent, Baller Ant, sorry, Baller Ant?
Baller Ant, yes.
Baller Ant is the name of the game, earned second place, losing to Union in their finals. The varsity also were involved in another league, the Oklahoma Scholastics Esports League, for the first time this year. In the regular season, they were seven and one. In the playoffs, were double elimination brackets also. We won our first two games versus Norman and Moore. We lost to Epic in the winter semifinals, dropping us to the loser bracket, which was against Moore High School again. The loser bracket finals and the finals were in OKC at Epic High School in-person. The varsity beat Moore and then lost to Epic in the best-of-three finals, earning second place. Due to, due to our win in the OESL league, we were invited to a playoff against seven other championship teams throughout the nation. We earned fifth place in that national tournament. So congratulations to these guys and to Mr. Paschal. You can do pictures. Do you have pictures? Yeah, all right.
Yes, and just gentlemen, by the way, too, Mr. Officer and I spoke to the Assistant Superintendent at Union today, and they're still stinging over the loss.
Takes us to item D. Oops, no C, excuse me. District Services, Mr. Kern.
Yes. Again, people file out of the room when I show up. I want to give you a quick update on a few things tonight in the world of storm damage updates. We knew this would be a slow process dealing with the insurance and adjusters and all that. So we just have to learn to embrace the system and to continue to advocate to get things fixed, get things fixed right, and to get them paid for. So at the high school football, football field press box, we're still waiting on engineers to tell us if we, even if we need bracing up there to fix that, and then that'll get wrapped up hopefully quickly. At the baseball field, the backstop netting is close to being complete. The poles were set Friday, and the new net is supposed to be here tomorrow. We should get it up tomorrow, but won't be able to put tension on it for twenty-one days, well, fourteen days from today. But it'll get us up and functional so we can get games going there. The roof at Hotson, we're going to try to do the whole thing all at once so that we can get a full thirty-year warranty on that. The loading dock at Hotson is also waiting some engineering work. So again, with all of these, while the speed may not be what we all want, I am thankful for our partnership with L2M. These are really large and complicated projects that they've been able to help point out problems and challenges that we may not have seen, and so they're helping us manage to get, to get through those, so we'll continue to work with them. So that's kind of all the old stuff that we're trying to fix. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nolte, and then he'll give you a quick update on new stuff that we're, and we're at in some of that projects, those projects.
So first up is track. Right now, it is with the city for its last review. We're doing stormwater. Since we're adding structures and getting rid of some of the previous areas, we have to make sure we don't overrun our storm system. That's the last thing that came up. We are putting a road on the north side. It does have to be asphalt, and we added a hammerheads where you can kind of pull it. It does have to be asphalt, and we added a hammerheads where you can kind of pull through and back up and make it another turn. On Hotson, we've done our schematic designs. Everybody's looked at them. We like them. They're moving on to design development. So that one is proceeding pretty much on course. And then the enrollment center, we have nailed it down to our final designs, and we're trying to fast-track some of the long lead items like millwork.
Any questions? So on the water retention with the track, do we have to have a retention pond or?
Well, we have one. It's around the backside of the fieldhouse going across the street. And so we just need to make sure our capacities are okay. So they have to show where we're diverting water and that it goes to the storm and can make it back out. We don't flood anybody downstream from us.
So we may need to put in additional pipes to move the water?
We don't think so, but we have to give them the calculations so that they're okay with it as well.
Thank you.
That's it for us. Thank you.
Continue strategic improvement. Mr. Thornton.
Good evening. Each month, a member of the team brings to you a presentation to update you on the progress that we're making with our CSI initiatives as we make our way through that process. I'm here tonight to update you specifically on Goal Area Four, which is RAM Resources. RAM Resources has two objectives. Objective one focuses on student programs. Specifically, our goal here is to create some consistency in the student programs throughout the district. And so far, at this point, the advisory team has been created and they have met three times. And they're currently working on setting the district-wide expectations and standards or the goals and objectives for the student programs in the district. Objective two relates to the improvement and maintenance of the district infrastructure. The Facilities Improvement Plan, a couple of things to highlight in this area. One is that the plan operations in particular are using collaboration days this year to provide training to their custodians, and that has been reported to be very successful and beneficial on their end. Another thing to note, as Dr. Coats mentioned earlier in the meeting, the long-range facilities planning, of course, is closely tied to this initiative. And as she pointed out, we've met three times. The most current meeting being last Thursday where we were able to gather some really good feedback and hopefully point us in the right direction on where to go with some of our major projects coming up in the future. The, as it relates to technology, a couple of things to highlight there that might be new from the last time I brought you an update. I have placed an order for the refresh of administrator laptops. Those are five years old now as of the end of this year, so it's time to refresh those. This time next year, we'll be looking at refreshing all of the teacher laptops. They'll be five years old this, you know, at the end of next year. So we'll refresh those about this time next year. I'll start looking at that. Also, one of the initiatives that was specifically our objectives actually mentioned in the strategic planning for technology was to upgrade the interactive displays. So at this point, since we began these initiatives, we have upgraded already a hundred and eighty-five of those interactive displays in the districts. We're making really good progress there. Lastly, transportation, one item to highlight there. And I believe Kerwin, Kerwin and/or Billy will provide you more details on this later in the meeting. But they have identified the platform that they hope to use for bus tracking or GPS, if you will. And I'll save, I'll save the show for Kerwin or Billy on that one. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Item four, comments from the public regarding agenda items.
There are none.
Move on to item five, Consent Agenda. Board to consider and take possible action on the following consent agenda items. And as of the regular meeting of January the eighth of twenty-four, under Teaching and Learning, Out-of-State Student Activity Trips, under C Technology. Looks like we're going to spend some money. Renewal of Commercial Service Agreement with Cox Business for ten gigabytes district-wide primary internet service for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a cost of three thousand four hundred dollars per month, as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the agreement. Two, renewal of Commercial Service Agreement with Cox Business for two gigabytes district-wide fail-over internet service for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a cost of two thousand and forty-six dollars per month, as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the agreement. Renewal the Commercial Service Agreement with Cox Business for district-wide metro E fiber connectivity service for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a cost of thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars per month, as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the agreement. Four, contract with United Systems for E-Rate Category Two Internet Connection Project for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a cost of six hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the contract. D, purchase orders and encumbrances and changes for encumbrances. Two, activity financial report for January of twenty-four. Three, activity account budgets. And finally, under Human Resources Transitions. Does anybody have any questions?
Russell, I shouldn't have let you sit down. Could you talk to us a little bit about this E-Rate Category Two Internal Connections Project?
Sure, I knew, I knew this was probably coming. It's a lot of money, I know. Yeah, it is. Yeah, a lot of reading. So E-Rate, basically, there's category one and category two. Category one is primarily your internet service. So for example, the two-thousand-ish agreement would be for, or actually, the thirty-four-hundred-dollar one would be for category one services. E-Rate pays, the Universal Services Fund pays sixty percent of that because we get a sixty percent discount. However, I also apply for OUSF funding, and they pick up the other forty percent on the category one items. Okay? The Metro E-Connection, which is the thirteen thousand dollar plus per month, that is also category one, and it follows those same discount guidelines. Category two is for internal connections. That would be any, anything from switches, battery backups, network drops. Basically, anything to get the bandwidth from the point that it comes into the building to the end user. We also have a sixty percent discount for E-Rate Category Two items. However, the district's responsible for the forty percent. This is a big year for category two items. Actually, it'll be, it won't be until twenty-four, twenty-five, but that will be a big year because it's time to replace all of our core switches. Kind of our top rack switches, core switches. Those are the high-dollar switches. Those things may be, well, they're itemized there. I don't remember the exact cost, but they're, you know, it may be a hundred thousand dollars apiece. The firewall is also a very expensive replacement. It's time to replace that. So it's just, it's just time to refresh those high-dollar items. With that being said, it was accounted for in the bond planning budget. So I've known all along and the money, quote unquote, is there for that. Something else to make note of is I pushed out some of this year's E-Rate. The twenty-three, twenty-four E-Rate Category Two items have been pushed out. So that inflated that figure a little bit as well. Ideally, every five years. This, some of these higher-end switches, you can get by another year or two with those just because they're, you know, they're manufactured and intended for high commercial or business use, you know. So they're, they're higher-end switches than what you see in the closets at the sites that are just feeding the classrooms and so on. You're welcome.
The dollar amount that we see here on the consent agenda, is that the total dollar amount? Or is that the forty percent that we are responsible for?
That's the, that's the total dollar amount. Our portion that we will pay will be somewhere around two hundred and forty thousand of that. Any other questions?
You may have to answer this one. On the encumbrances, it says Arkansas K-12 LLC, Epson 760 Y, and Mounts. Do you know what that is?
Yes, I do.
Figure so.
So again, like I mentioned in the CSI report, the interactive projectors that we're replacing, those, that bill is for a hundred of those projectors and interactive displays that I ordered with the mounts. I got down, I think we still have about eighteen left from the last order of a hundred that I placed. And so this will be, so we have them on hand to just keep rolling those out to meet that objective, that CSI objective, and keep everybody with the equipment they need.
Yeah, it's not so bad when you divide them out into per piece.
Right.
I just thought, if that's one piece of equipment, that's expensive.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything else?
No, I think the others are somebody else, but.
Okay.
The, just a curiosity thing, on the purchase order ten ninety-one, it's not you. It says, why are we paying ourselves, Owasso Public Schools, for the JOM Book Fair incentive, ninety-two hundred dollars? That just looks weird. We're going to write a check to ourselves, deposit it, and then what are we going to do?
I agree, it does look weird. This is the standard way we've done this for years, though, for the way these scholarships for these JOM programs work is, right, they make that PO out to the district. And, I mean, Johnson Valley Program approves the way we're doing it, so we just continue to do it that way. But I agree, it does look a little odd.
Thank you. And then on, oh, the other one I was going to ask was technology, too, but you've already explained it. Thank you. Refreshing the laptops for the administrators. That's it for me. Any other questions?
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Item, our motion made in second. Real call, please.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
And Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Gets us to item six, Teaching and Learning, Mr. Officer? Or his designate?
Good evening. I have the privilege of bringing to you a quote and agreement on behalf of the high school. Mr. Officer mentioned a little bit earlier about CSI goal areas and things related to ICAP. One of the things, this conversation started last spring, associated with offering, various offerings at the high school, was the start of a new class. That class started, was in the course guide last year and has started this year, called Employment Essentials. That particular class, along the lines of trying to think through college and career readiness and life readiness, is targeting specifically things in the realm of manufacturing, designing, marketing, things of that nature. So the class this year has been working on different items they would like to create and sell, basically establishing a school store. One of the tools that they had looked at that they were interested in purchasing is this particular direct-to-garment printer. Looks, it's a little different than screen printing and things of that nature. It's, it's a, it's a good-sized piece of equipment. And Mr. Thornton has reviewed the specs and all the details that it would take to have a piece of this equipment run. It comes with the training as well. With the training as well to make sure that they know how to safely and accurately operate that machine. So what they are hopeful to do, I had the privilege of going over and hearing one of the presentations for things that they would, what they would like to do and create and sell in the store and what they don't want to try to do. So they're very mindful of, we have a lot of other things that our students and our families have access to that are created maybe through athletics and other venues. This would be very specific targeting high school audience and more high school student-friendly price point on some things. And just what are they, what are they interested in? What would they like? What is something that they can do to help bring the culture of Owasso High School to the masses, if you will? I think their long-term vision would love to be able to see, once they get this going, that they are able to provide printing services and things to, it could be something that could be district-wide as far as just Rams in general, not necessarily something branded for the high school, things of that nature. So a lower price point, we're not talking anything related to anything, brand name, or anything along those lines. And this would be using S R money as well. So seven ninety-five.
Do we have anything in the budget for the ink?
There. The site will actually take care of the, once the purchase of the equipment is taken care of, the site has the funds to be able to have the consumable materials that it would take to serve, or provide, keep it in service, basically. So the high school activity account, and once the store becomes more established, would be able to also contribute to that as well.
Now, I have an ink printer, or color, and I can tell you that the ink gets very expensive over time, as you probably know. And then I was pleased to see that it has a heat treatment part because, well, my daughter's a graphic design artist, and she sells stuff, too. Zany Raven, you can go out and look it up. But anyway, commercial for her. The, just, if it's just applied to the outside, obviously, it peels off, if you will, but this is going to be impressed, pressure treated, so it's almost like it won't come up, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, good.
Yes, I think they did some good research, I think, on trying to figure out what's the best, the best thing that's going to give them a quality product as a result of it. And additionally, you were along that line, oh, this also, that was kind of impressive, like the quality, like again, difference maybe from like a screen print, but like the quality imaging that they will be able to do is almost photographic, so it actually is probably photographic. I probably shouldn't say almost.
It's important, too, Mr. Higgs, the AP who was kind of leading this endeavor, has some experience in this at his previous job. He's done lots of stuff in this area, so he'd be very comfortable navigating this stuff.
But please, give me another question. Is there anything else I can answer?
I make a motion that we approve the quote and agreement with Hirsch Solutions for a garment printer for the Owasso High School for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year at a cost of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars, as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the quote and the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Real call, please.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes. Gets us to item number eight, Finance, Mr. Storm, or did I skip one? I did. District Services, Mr. Kern. I just don't want to skip over you for some reason.
I'm usually good with that. Do you want to read it? Do you want me to read it?
You can read it.
All right, we're going to talk about Sam Sarah. How about, how about that? We are bringing a license agreement to you tonight for Sam Sarah, for bus fleet tracking and analytics for the remainder of this year. So through end of June and the following year through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at a cost of four thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, as outlined in the attachment. So what Sam Sarah is, it is almost like it's a GPS tracking-type system that we can put on our bus. We are currently piloting five of those units. And this will get us twenty more, so it's sort of that next step. And then our hope is that that will go well as well, and we will budget in our next bond to do the whole fleet, and that would be our goal. So what these devices give us is a couple of things. One, it does allow us to track where the bus is. So if we have a substitute driver and they're far- So if we have, um, a substitute driver and they're far out, we can easily say, oh yeah, you missed a turn, you can go back, whatever. It allows us to, uh, if a bus is acting up, it gives us analytics that we can, can plug in and tell what's going on with the bus, so that helps us and we can, can move those around a little bit. And then eventually, what it will do, when we get to the, sort of the, the final stage, is, is bus tracking. And so what, what do we mean by that? Uh, what we would do, it's, it's a fine line there, I think, um, between allowing that to track wherever we want. But what it's gonna allow us to do is be real-time with our bus stops. So for example, uh, after school, let's say there's a train that's blocking the tracks and you're wondering, uh, where your student is, um, it's just the, the train's blocking the track. Well, we've got no way to communicate that. But you'll be able to type in your address, know what your bus stop is, and it'll give you in real-time when it, when it's gonna be there. And so that will help eliminate a lot of the phone calls that come in to transportation. All right, hold on, let me find out where they are. Hey, yeah, we're, we're stuck in traffic. Okay, they're stuck in traffic. We'll be able to do that real-time. So that's sort of one of those end goals, but there's a lot of other benefits along the way with the analytics, uh, and things of that nature. So this is, again, it's just that next step in that progression to getting the whole fleet on Sam Sarah. Another, uh, benefit to that, we, you will probably remember, we have TransFinder, that's our, our, uh, routing software. There is some analytics in that that we'll be able to actually take off of that bill. It's a few thousand dollars, because this will be able to do it as well. So there'll be a little bit of savings there, but we'll, when we get the whole fleet, it'll be about a twenty thousand dollar a year, um, expense, but it's one that we think our, our parents will want, um, to have that real-time, uh, access.
Are you gonna, how many buses are in the fleet, Billy? Are you only gonna put it on the buses, or are you gonna put it on all the school vehicles?
Right now, we do not plan to do all school vehicles, um, just doing the fleet and activities. But doesn't mean that we, we wouldn't get to that step if we really wanted to. Okay. Other questions?
Just a curiosity thing, you said if somebody basically is off, off the route, do they have to call in and ask help, or will there be some sort of a warning? Or does somebody have to actually sit and watch the screen and pay attention?
Well, we probably wouldn't track all eighty of them on a screen, but if they called in and say, hey, um, missing a, missing a turn, then we could easily pull them up, so.
I just, as a parent, wanna say thank you for this. This is, uh, this is, it's gonna be really, really helpful for those parents. I can speak from experience, several times the kids are outside and we're wondering, like, did we miss the bus? Did it come early? Is there a sub? Did we?
Especially on cold mornings.
Yeah, yeah, this will be great.
If you know your bus is running seven minutes late, that's seven minutes longer in the warm house before you got to run out to the bus stop.
I make a motion that we approve the license agreement with Sam Sarah for bus fleet tracking and analytics for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year at a cost of four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, as outlined in the attachment, and authorize the superintendent or designate to execute the license agreement.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, roll call please.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now item eight, finance, Mr. Storm. Were to consider and take post-it action on the treasurer's report for January of twenty-four.
Thank you. So through the month of January, uh, typically you see a big jump in revenue for school districts, because the month of January is when we start receiving local property taxes, so that's certainly reflective in this month's report as well. This is the month that we generally go, uh, we switch over from expenditures exceeding revenue to the other way around, um, at least we hope we do, because we need to, to finish the year where we, uh, hope to. So that certainly is what happened this year in January, so you can see that, um, revenue at this point in the year is, um, roughly, oh, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two million dollars more than, I'm sorry, uh, about fourteen or fifteen dol- million dollars more than expenditures. And we need it to be that way, because our expenditures are kind of backloaded and we know that at the very end of the year, we have three months of payroll that we run, so, uh, so we need to be where we're at right now to be able to finish the year where we hope to finish the year. So you can see that revenue is about three-point-eight million higher than it was at this point last year, and expenditures are also about three-point-six million higher than they were at this point last year. So again, that's reflective of the fact that a lot of the increased funding is coming for the, uh, increased, uh, salary raises, and so it's reflective in that we're spending, we're spending additional funds that we received for those intended purposes. Um, so we have the regular information in the treasurer's report this month, and also gave you a couple of other pieces of information this month that we don't normally see in the treasurer's report. I added some detail for the state funding formula, just so that you can have that and be aware. So I mentioned last month that the midterm allocations come out at the end of December, but at the time of last month's board meeting, we didn't have all of the detail, uh, behind those allocations, so I waited till this month to give you some of that information. So what you have on the last two pages of the treasurer's report this month are, uh, two, two pieces of information, two spreadsheets related to the state funding formula. One that just kind of shows you the mathematical calculation of how we get to our allocation. Um, and the top are, uh, the inputs, um, just the, the, uh, the number of weighted students that our district has times the dollar amount per weighted student in the formula, plus a small amount related to transportation. And that gives you the, the inputs, and then the, the chargeables, the negatives, are the part at the bottom of the formula, the equation. So those represent other local sources of revenue, uh, available to Owasso Public Schools, most of which represent revenue that came in last year. Uh, the one that's handled differently is ad valorem, which, uh, they run it through a separate process and they estimate how much we're gonna receive this year, and they plug that in as a chargeable. So our chargeables, um, total about thirty-four-point-seven million, and when you subtract those out of the equation, our final stated allocation is about thirty million, two hundred thousand, if you round, round up. So that's about a million more than I initially projected, which is certainly good news. The main reason, uh, for that difference is that the weighted student membership, the weighted average daily membership is a little bit higher than I had projected. So the second page gives you the detail on those weights. So the second page gives you some historical data and then the data for this first quarter, for this current fiscal year, for our student numbers, and then the various weights that go into that weighted calculation. So, um, our actual weighted average, I mean, our actual average daily membership, the average number of students that were enrolled in our school on any given day during the first quarter, um, were nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight point, and a fraction. So that's our average number of students on any given day that are members in our school district. And then you see those weights that are added there as well, that go into the state funding formula. So there's a weight for grades. So each grade has its own unique weight, some count for an additional point-two weight, some count maybe for an additional point-oh-five weight, uh, some don't have any additional weight at all. They just have a one-point-oh. So depending upon the grades that those students are in, that's calculated. So our total grade weight is about one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six. There is also a weight, a summative weight, for all of our special education categories. So again, that information is submitted to the State Department during the first quarter, uh, various weights for various different categories of need. All of those added together, um, amount to one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three, as our special ed weight, uh, for the current year. There's a weight for gifted students, which, um, amounts to point-two-five for each student identified that fits within that category. And so our weight is just shy of two hundred there, one hundred and ninety-eight point five. Uh, there's a weight for bilingual students, same type of thing, point-two-five weight for each student identified. Our total weight there is two hundred and thirty-one point five. There's a weight for economically disadvantaged. So each student who is identified as economically disadvantaged used to count for a point-two-five weight, now they count for a point-three weight, so a little bit heavier in the weighting system. And our current economically disadvantaged weight is now twelve hundred and fifty-nine. That's a pretty big increase from last year. A part of that is the increase in the, the weight, uh, and a part of that is our increased identification of students as well. And then the last weight in this schedule is something a little bit unique. It's called the Teacher Experience Index, and our number there is about tw- two hundred and twenty-four. This is a number that's calculated by the State Department that's reflective of our staff's average year of experience and educational level. So it's the only one that's not really tied to students at all. So, um, all of that information, again, is submitted through the State Personnel Report. The state runs all the numbers for all five hundred and somewhat schools, comes up with an average. The average teacher, um, in the state of Oklahoma is X number of years' experience with, let's say, a bachelor plus fifteen, whatever that comes up to. And then every school in the state whose staff are above that average, uh, get this weight, and every school in the state whose staff is below that average get zero weight. So half the schools in the state don't get anything for this weight and have to. Most of our neighbors to the south don't get this, so Jinx doesn't have any weight in this category. Broken Arrow doesn't, Union doesn't. Bigsby has a smaller weight, about seventy-four. I looked all those up. But I was also very interested to find out that this two hundred and twenty-four weight for Owasso reflects the highest Teacher Experience Index weight in the entire state. So I think that's something that we can be proud of, that, I think that's reflective of the fact that we have a, a highly experienced and capable and educated staff, teaching our, teaching our community. So that two hundred and twenty-four, um, represents close to a million dollars in the formula, 'cause you take that, multiply it times the factor of four thousand, two hundred per weighted student. That gives you an idea of how much that means to us in the, in the funding formula. So, uh, with, the way this works is they are, they have already paid us five months based on, uh, the initial allocation. So once this mid-year allocation comes out, they simply readjust, recalculate how much is left to pay us, and then they just pay us that monthly amount, uh, each month for the rest of the year. It does still get tweaked pretty often, uh, since these came out in late December. They've already been tweaked like six times. So, um, it's hard to explain why all those adjustments happen, but there are various things they're doing statewide, maybe a penalty assessed to a few schools, and then they rerun that money through the formula. So every week I have to check it, because it goes up and down a little. A few weeks ago, it went up a few thousand, and then last week it went down a few thousand, back to about where it was before. So you see it move up and down a little bit, but this is probably pretty accurate, uh, ref- reflection of the amount of money that the district will receive this year in the state funding formula, so.
Yeah, I've heard it before the other day, but it is complicated.
But thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Tippet of information, especially about, um, our teacher experience weight.
Sure.
That's great to know.
Can I ask you a question about the bond funds?
Yes, sir.
I know we invest our money that we haven't spent yet for the bonds that we've sold. Where do we invest that money?
Well, um, mostly with, with First Bank Owasso right now, but, um, we're getting a pretty good interest rate right there right now. Certainly, we, we continue to look at that and we try to watch the cash flow and try to balance, you know, the timing of when we think those expenditures are gonna happen, but, um, and the, the interest right now is primarily reflected in Fund Thirty-One, which is the current bond fund that we're currently putting those monies into. So we're, we've got some, starting to get some fairly respectable numbers, um, for, for interest earnings for the year, so that's also helping us be able to fund those projects.
And do, are they still required to, uh, prove that they have adequate reserves to guarantee that we get all our proceeds or our principal back? We used to have to approve that, is that no longer required?
Well, we do still approve it through, through the audit process. I mean, the auditors, when they come to look at that, um, they certainly look at that information. But yes, we are required by state law to have, um, collateral pledge for our deposits over and above anything covered by the FDIC, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any additional questions?
Make a motion, we approve the treasurer's report for January twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, roll call please.
Ms. Mills. Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
And Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Takes us to item B, board to consider and take post-it action on the payment of a one-time stipend for national board-certified staff for the attached list.
Yes, you have that list in front of you for the teachers who qualify. Uh, the, the three at the bottom are three that fall into a category that the district has to fund. The rest are funded, uh, by the state, and we've already received that payment.
I move we vote to approve the payment of a one-time stipend for national board-certified staff for the attached list.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, roll call please.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Storm. Number nine, executive session, vote to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment of Owasso Public Schools' central office administrators, assistant superintendents, chief financial officer, executive directors, directors, and assistant directors listed on the attachment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year as authorized by Oklahoma State Title Twenty-Five, Section Three-O-Seven-B-One. Motion, please.
So move we approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, roll call please.
Mr. Turpin.
Yes.
Mr. England.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Ms. Mills.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman?
Yes.
Acknowledged, return to open session. Statement of executive session. During the executive session, the members of the Board of Education who were present were Brent, England, Frosty, Turpin, Stephanie Ruttman, Neil Kessler, and Rhonda Mills. Also present during the executive session was Dr. Margaret Coats. During the executive session, board members discussed the employment of Owasso Public Schools' central office administrators, assistant superintendents, chief financial officer, executive directors, directors, and assistant directors listed on the attachment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Nothing else was discussed and no votes were taken. This will constitute the minutes of the executive session. Gets us to item ten. Board to consider and take possible action on the employment of Owasso Public Schools'. Here we go again. Central office administrators, assistant superintendents, chief financial officers, directors, directors, and assistant directors listed on the attachment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Dr. Coats?
Yes, I would request that you consider approving every single person that's on the list.
Make a motion that we approve the employment of the Owasso Public Schools' central office administrators, assistant superintendents, chief financial officer, executive directors, directors, and assistant directors listed on the attachment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Dr. Coats?
Yes, I would request that you consider approving every single person that's on the list.
Make a motion that we approve the employment of the Owasso Public Schools' central office administrators, assistant superintendents, chief financial officer, executive directors, directors, and assistant directors listed on the attachment for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Nothing else was discussed and no votes were taken. This will constitute the minutes of the executive session.
Gets us to item eleven. New business?
There is none.
Item twelve, comments from the public regarding non-agenda items?
There are none.
A motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made in second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Mills?
Yes.
Mrs. Ruttman?
Yes.
Mr. Turpin?
Yes.
Ms. Mills?
Yes.
All right, and congratulations, everyone. One more year.